Board of Education is called to order. I am Christine Vitale, the Chair, joined tonight by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Caneli, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly, as well as our student representatives from Fairfield, Ludlow and Fairfield Ward. I will ask you to please rise for the pledge. Ms. Maxine Caneli, will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you. We're happy to have our student representatives back with us. I hope that midterms went well for everybody. And we're looking forward to your report. Who would like to report first? Ward or Ludlow?
I think Ludlow will go first today. Good evening, everyone. My name's Annika Martens, and I'm your junior representative from Ludlow. I'd like to begin by discussing some Falcons shining in our community because last weekend, students from the Future Business Leaders of America Club packaged 540 bags of food in Norwalk to help combat hunger. The staff at the facility were very complimentary of the students and even asked if they could return sometime later in the year to help out again. Over the past couple of weeks, all of our freshmen and our sophomores and juniors have been working with their teachers and counselors to plan on course selection for the next year. And joining them next year are the current eighth graders or rising freshmen. Ludlow hosted eighth grade night last Wednesday where the Ludlow leaders toured around eighth grade students and their families around the school just to showcase our vast collection of really cool courses and opportunities that they have. We really can't wait to welcome all our freshman Falcons next fall. Talking about all those elective classes, students in the Ludlow Drawing and Painting class worked hard on their artwork as a culmination of their work in the semester, and their pieces are hanging in the art exhibit in the back of our library. Back in December, Ludlow students had the opportunity to sign the No Place for Hate pledge, which is a statement from our school community that we're working to foster a more equitable and inclusive environment for our students. In late January, like three weeks ago, students came to the auditorium during their English class to talk about what respect is, discuss Ludlow's specific situation, and commit to more intentional acts of respect in the future. That's all I have for tonight, and I'd like to pass the mic to Reed.
Good evening. My name is Reed Childers. I am your Senior Board of Ed Representative from Fairfield Ludlow. The first thing I'd like to address is the assembly we had like maybe two weeks ago about the senior experience. During this presentation, all of the guidelines for participating in an internship or experience were covered and thoroughly explained. So basically, what you can do is you can choose from either a work experience, which is kind of just working at your job, or an internship that you kind of designed. You can choose to volunteer. You can create an independent project, or you can do something with the school or faculty, middle school, elementary school, whatever you're really interested in. A Google Classroom page was created in order for students to find all the information they need about it, as well as a page where students can submit the details of their internships. Many of our seniors, including myself, are excited to participate in the senior experience, which will be from Friday, May 27 through Thursday, June 16. Additionally, another important subject matter regarding seniors is graduation. While many feel that having graduation on the turf would be overturned to normal, others favor a graduation at the beach like in the previous years. The next topic I'll be reporting on is midterms. For the most part, our students did a phenomenal job with having midterms for the first time. Students studied hard and saw fantastic outcomes. However, despite the good testing results, many people do remain critical of the return of midterms. Our students reported that they felt midterms made January more stressful than ever. Students in AP classes are especially opposed as their time to learn content for the AP exams is now much shorter. More work is piling up because teachers are scrambling to teach subjects that will be tested on the exam. Additionally, many students believe that having finals test only on material learned in the second semester would be beneficial if midterms continue to exist. Lastly, I'd like to share the successes of our sports teams. For starters, the combined Ludlow and Ward girl ski team and boy ski team had incredible successes. The girl ski team won the Connecticut State Championship, making this victory their ninth state title in the last 10 years. The boy ski team also had incredible results, having their best season in years, finishing in third place. Next, the Ludlow cheer team won the FCAC Championship coed division. The girls indoor track team won the FCAC Indoor Track Championship as well. To conclude our sports information, I'd also like to give a shout out to some individual athletes. Congratulations to Dylan Sherman, who won the Wrestling FCAC Championship, and our LL Indoor Track State Champions, Tyler Bartlett, Stephen Diddleberg, Tia Stapleton, and Anna Keely. That is all I have for you today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Fairfield Board of Ed. My name is Lance Nella, and here at Fairfield Ward High School, we're super excited for our extended weekend this week with a half day on Thursday due to professional development, followed by no school on Friday and Monday due to President's Day. Starting things off this month, the freshmen recently had their No Place for Hate meeting with the Unity Coalition, where students got to talk about their experiences in Ward and how it can be made into a place of no hate. The assembly began by introducing the program's goals, followed by teaching the students the four roles someone can play: target, perpetrator, bystander, and ally. This is a great program pushed by Fairfield Ward High School to make our school into a place where people feel safe, comforted, and supported.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emma Fekety. I'm a senior student representative for Fairfield Ward. In the first week of February, students in the first semester PE classes had the opportunity to compete in the annual badminton tournament. Qualified teams met during second period to compete against other teams in other PE classes, and the championship took place during period four. This tournament was a great way for upperclassmen to have some fun in their final years at Ward. Also, this past Wednesday, our Mustang mentors welcomed the incoming class of 2026 by walking around the halls of Ward for a tour of electives. As a Mustang mentor myself, I can say that the incoming students seemed very engaged and super excited to get involved in the new school community.
And on February 10, seniors who were thinking about taking a gap year or a semester before heading to college and were not sure how to go about it or unsure what the process looks like attended a virtual gap year panel and got to hear from Catherine Stevater, founder of the Gap Year Solutions, as well as a parent slash student who took a gap year before going on to college. In addition, on February 23, the College and Career Center will be having its career and STEM meeting, in which they will discuss different jobs in STEM and their requirements. Lastly, Mr. Kavanna had a virtual homeroom meetings regarding the senior experience, in which he discussed expectations and criteria for the seniors who are participating in this opportunity.
And wrapping up with a not-so-small sports update, in addition to the combined girl ski team winning state championships and the boys team finishing in third in states, our Ward girls gymnastics team finished in first place in FCACs, and Emma Johnson was the all-around FCAC champion. Our wrestling team finished close second in the FCAC Championships with Lucas Coleman as the 152-pound FCAC champion and Will Ebert as both the 170-pound FCAC champion and tournament outstanding wrestler. Our track team participated in states this past weekend, where several athletes qualified for state opens this weekend, and Mike Barnau was named state champion in the high jump and earned an All-State Award. We're very proud of our Fairfield Ward alumni class of 2012, Kristin Santos, for her participation in this year's Olympic Games. It was very exciting to watch her compete against other world athletes. And finally, our winter pep rally happened last Friday, and students gathered in our large gym for a showing of our winter sports teams, as well as performances by our amazing dance team, cheer team, and students who participated in the basketball challenge. And we finished with a victory from our boys basketball team last Friday evening, where our stamp P dressed in black and showed an incredible amount of support and Mustang pride. As we head further into Semester Two, we anticipate another month of positive updates from our Ward student body. Thank you, and go Ward.
So much exciting stuff going on. I mean, you guys have been busy, and it's wonderful to hear that things are returning to normal. The eighth graders, thank you for welcoming them and for touring with them, and congratulations to all of our athletes. I'm looking forward to a Board of Ed meeting. We're going to have to find a bigger venue, I think, to recognize all these successes. Any questions for our student reps, Mrs. Maxine Caneli?
Just one, and I hope the board won't mind my asking this question, but to the Ward students, is there going to...I believe I saw posted somewhere that there was going to be a hockey game fundraiser this week. Is that anything that you can speak to?
Yeah, I actually heard about it. So I think it is happening this week. I'm not sure of all the details. It was on one of our Instagram pages. I think it was the hockey team, but if...yeah, I think that's where we find it.
Okay, I think it was on the 19th at Wonderland of Ice, and the game against Greenwich, that it was serving as a fundraiser for Ward graduates. So, okay, I don't know any more details than that either. Just give it a chance for a shout out.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, you guys are welcome to stay, but also welcome to, you know, head out, up to you. But thank you, and if you leave, we'll see you next month. Okay, moving on to public comment. At this time, we ask any members of the public who would like to give comment to come forward. Hello, just your name and address for the record, please. Press down on the button and hold it down as you speak.
The whole time, okay. Joan Robb, 131 Notapog Road, longtime Fairfield resident, longtime teacher at Dwight School. I teach third grade. I was here last month, and we heard a lot of the parents talking about the social and emotional impact on kids, and I'm fully aware of that. And there's been another cost in this that I kind of wanted to bring to the fore, and that is the loss of instructional time that we've experienced through this. This year, recess is 10 minutes longer, lunch is 10 minutes longer. They're not concurrent in my case because we could only have one grade level in the caf at a time, and so there's extra transitions in there. You put in a mass break in the morning, and, you know, we go out our back door. I set the timer on my phone literally for six or seven minutes, and we play a game. The kids run back and forth or breathe quickly, but we're locked out because that's a thing. And so now we walk around the building. We're back inside. There's 10 minutes gone in the morning. There's 10 minutes gone in the afternoon. Thank God that rolling snack is gone, but that was another 10 minutes gone. I put this into a table. I sent it to Walter and James because we're real...if you round that 55 minutes to the 60, we're losing an hour a day of instructional time. And this for a group of children who haven't had a normal school year since kindergarten. Those are my third graders. The kids younger than them have never had normal. We need to normal...make school as normal as possible as soon as possible. They can't not keep paying the price. And beginning with the masks, hopefully that will change March 1st, February 28th. But as much as is possible, we need to get elementary school back to being elementary school. It is not a new normal because it is not normal, and it needs to change as soon as we are able to make those changes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? I'm just going to check, see if we have any online. We have no public callers online, so we are ready to move forward. With that, we have a presentation of the 2022-2027 Draft District Improvement Plan. Mr. Cummings? Okay, we're going to go right into the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My incoming superintendent, I'm joined tonight by three of our executive directors, Dr. Zakia Parish, Dr. Savichansek, and Mr. Mankusi, and we'll get to this, but each of them led part of the work, and we are here tonight to answer any of the board's questions around the draft that's in front of you. Before I take a quick walk through the draft, which the board was given back in their agenda packet, I just want to make a couple of comments. Some of this is a repetition of what was in the agenda form, but I think it's important that those people watching at home have some understanding of what we're working with and towards. So first of all, before I begin or go any further, I really want to thank the members of the committee. We will be providing in your Friday packet this week a full listing of all the members of the District Improvement Steering Committee. It's a pretty...it's about...there's about 30 folks involved, including quite a number of our students. We have five students each from Fairfield Ludlow and five students from Ward. We have been working since last spring, but really took so much of a break over the summer and then got down to the work more in September. It is a continuation of the district improvement work that had begun prior to the pandemic. It reflects, I think...well, I think it's fortunate in some ways that we didn't complete this work before the pandemic because the pandemic is certainly informing our work as we go forward. So that committee has...was meeting earlier in the fall in person in this room, and then once we broke into four groups to work on each of the four goal areas, we essentially moved to an online environment. And I'll talk when I'm done tonight, or after I get through this, I'll talk about our next steps. The goal of tonight's presentation is really...and the conversation tonight is to elicit your feedback on the current draft in order to help us identify what is unclear and what may be missing. We wanted your input before moving forward with developing action plans that will include anticipated budgets for both expenses and needed staff time. One of the commitments we made as a group, as a steering committee, was that we wanted to make sure that anything we were asking, trying to do, we had the requisite time in our existing professional learning or could possibly budget for summer planning to accomplish. So that...those are kind of the...some of the...a couple of the parameters that we began to work with. The goals, the four objectives of the plan right now. I led the academic work, and that was the first one by June 27. All students will demonstrate developmentally appropriate mastery of content, concepts, and skills as measured on national and district assessments, including the academic expectations. Mr. Mankusi led the SEL. We'll call it the SEL goal by June 2027. All students will demonstrate developmentally appropriate self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness after receiving explicit instruction aligned to the CASL framework. Dr. Savichansek led the group that was working on the DEI. By June 2027, all students will engage in culturally responsive curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and develop a sense of belonging to the FPS community in order to create more equitable opportunities and outcomes. And finally, Dr. Parish worked with the Communications Subcommittee. By June 2027, district communications to all stakeholder groups will engender engagement, a sense of community, and support for the district vision and plans. These four goals came out of the committee's work in reviewing the past district improvement plan, the data that we had around student achievement, as well as the survey data, both the school-based surveys and the district surveys that were conducted essentially over the last couple of years. So I view these goals with you tonight as separate pieces. Now, it's really important to remember, and this is kind of the problem in front of us, one of the problems in front of us, is that we do not...as we go forward, we want to make sure that what's presented for you tonight as essentially these separate columns is intertwined in the final document. So what we're concerned about is if we approach, say, the SARBI work, which is in the academic achievement goal, falls under that. If we approach that separately from the SEL SABI work that's in the SEL goal, we're really going to be splitting hairs at some point on what the ultimate outcome should be. There's work in the DEI goal that supports the academic achievement goal. So one of our struggles as we think about this, and we're going to be looking for community input, staff input on how to resolve this, is how do we present this in a format that transcends the two-dimensionality of paper and how these pieces may interconnect? Because they are designed to be mutually supportive of each other towards their outcomes. So that's one of the things that I want to put on the table now and say that, you know, welcome to any suggestion, but it's certainly something that we have to think about. We are also...we are, as I mentioned earlier, we are also being very mindful of presenting a plan that is achievable. We've had conversations as steering committee around the goals, the output goals that are shared with you tonight, and some of those, to use one of the words that was said, they seem lofty. But it's really important to say that we have to identify lofty goals that will, in a sense, transcend the next five years' achievement goal. If you take one of those goals, which is that every student leaves second grade reading a grade level, that is a goal that should be with the Fairfield Public Schools, in fact, all school districts forever. That's a major milestone, and it's important that we continually strive towards achieving that. So there are goals within this document, and there'll be action steps within this document that will be achievable within the next year, five years. That's what our intent is. In fact, some of them will be hopefully achieved by the end of next year, but others will go past that because it's going to be just continual work. As we've talked about many times, the public school system is continually challenged by new students entering, new staff continually...there's an overturn of staff. So there's a need to continually apprise ourselves of the work and keep moving it forward. Our input goals are our expectations. For work to be accomplished over the next five years, they must be met in order to achieve our output goals. And as I said, the output goals may transcend this five-year plan. It will always be necessary, going back to that grade-two goal, it will always be necessary to have a goal such as that in any of the district improvement work that goes forward. So after we have this conversation tonight, we will begin work on the next set of...on the next action steps. We were also going to be seeking input on the plan from other community stakeholders. We're going to seek broader input from our staff, from our parents, from our students, and we're looking to develop a schedule of opportunities to meet with community members and community groups that are not necessarily tied directly to the school system as well. So with that said, let me just do a brief...excuse me, a brief overview of the plan, and then we can talk about questions. We did try to set context to the goal, to the plan, and this is certainly something that we want to make sure that we carry forward. So how does this plan sit in the existing work of the Fairfield Public Schools, the mission, the vision, our core values? We created this theory of action. If the Fairfield Public Schools adopts a district improvement plan that is focused on proven high-yield strategies to increase student engagement, belonging, and achievement, and acknowledges the reality of the limits of time and resources, then it will fill its miss...excuse me, will fulfill its mission for every student. And then, as you can see, we broke out the goals and then specific strategic initiatives under each. This was the work that the subcommittees did. As you can...and as you've read through this, you probably already can identify where there is the potential for some cross-matching across these columns. And then, as we go further into the document, we began to talk about our outcomes, and we began to identify, for now, as a construction piece, we essentially identified inputs and outputs to help us focus on the work. We initially had these kind of all listed out, and then, as we began to think about it, we began to think about the kind of necessary action steps that need to take place, excuse me, before the final set of work or before the final outcomes, outputs occur. So with that said, I want to spend our time on questions, and if there's a need to go back into the document, we certainly can, but...
Take it to the board for any questions. Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you very much for this initial draft. I'll try and just go along by page. I know it might jump around a bit because things are in different areas, but just on the cover page, bullet point number one. Just looking for a little bit of clarification, to demonstrate developmentally appropriate mastery of content, concepts, and skills. Is there a working definition of developmentally appropriate mastery, or is that more...I'm thinking in my mind, is this connected in some way to the state-defined levels of proficiency and growth in any way? Is our own separate definition of that?
No, thank you, Ms. Jacobson. In all cases of this, what we're trying to avoid is benchmarking this against established standards, not making our own.
Sorry, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes. Would not be benchmarking this against our own creation of what developmentally appropriate is.
Okay, so this is aligned, then, with more of an accountability index metric, so to speak?
Yes. What that is yet is to be determined, but that's the intent from the very beginning, that we would be picking something that is...has validity behind it. We would not create our own.
Okay. Just some feedback overall is some sort of alignment or indication that, you know, ultimately that takes us back to in addition to, rather than in lieu of, what we ultimately will get graded on, whether we agree with all of that or not, but I'm constantly bringing that up. So...and then you had as measured on national and district assessments, and I was wondering if that was an intentional decision to leave out state? And what national? Are we talking about NAEP?
We would use NAEP. We could use SBA. We think about AP, you know, PSAT and SAT. No, there was no intentionality of leaving out state. I think we didn't really have a state assessment at this point in mind.
I just didn't know if you meant the Smarter Balanced or the NGSS?
We included those under the national.
Okay, you did. Okay, excellent. Thank you for that clarification. I'm going to skip you guys back to the inputs and the outputs page. So sorry, page seven. There's a lot in here, so this is great. So overall question is, when you come to a final version of this before the body, will there be an appendix of some kind with each of the baseline metrics so that we have the baseline that you're working from in terms of any increases or decreases that are throughout what you're measuring things on?
There will be, and what we're looking to do, and we've done some preliminary work on this, Dr. Savichansek has done some preliminary work on this, is start to identify the N and break that out so that we can set real clear targets. And then the goal would be that, once the district improvement plan is finalized, that that becomes the base document for the school improvement plans and then the administrator and teacher goals that follow.
It would be an overarching district, but then also by a building?
That's correct.
Down to...got it. Perfect. Okay, thank you. So I noticed that we have by June 2027 ELA, and we also have by June 2027 math. I was wondering if there was a reason why we didn't include science, knowing that's the third content area to which we are held some quote-unquote accountable for? And if not, do we think that's necessary as an additional item here?
I don't think...I think it was just missed, and certainly we would not put science in the backseat.
Yeah, okay. So just a note on science. And then, when you say some of these metrics, you guys, I will close the gap between subgroup, I understand what that means, by 20% and raise the bar by 10%. Is that an all-student metric, or is that a non-high-needs metric? Two different groups there.
Good evening. The metric to close the bar and raise the gap, to raise the gaps, obviously for all students, so it would be in addition to the closing the bar, so we'd add it to that one. It includes all the subgroups that are below, as well as the high-needs, which are included.
So it's not the non-high-needs, it's the all-student group, then?
For the total.
Yes.
That's raising, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. That's all I have on here, but just a couple of other things that I had. I don't know...I know there's four goals here. So I'm thinking, did the committee ever discuss a fifth column or a fifth goal in regard to our facilities, security, both physical plant, cyber, you know, things of the more hardware, so to speak? I know we have separate documents for that, our waterfall, our maintenance, you know, all of that, but I would find it hard to believe that we wouldn't have a fifth column addressing those types of items.
We did discuss that, and I think I raised this issue when I gave the board an early report in the year. We absolutely think that a goal like around those areas is needed. We think that that is a goal that really should be created with the board in mind because it's going to be so budget-dependent. And with the work of both the facility, with the existing finance committee, and if the facilities committee by law goes through, I think there's a lot of work there to be done with that. I think also related to that are issues around the other process and structural changes that need to take place in the district as well. So how do we look at... as well. So how do we look at processes around declining enrollment and the impact of staffing? There's a number of pieces there that go beyond, I think, the expertise of the groups, the folks currently on the steering committee, and really require more of a board input for long-term planning for the board. So I hope I answered your question, but that's really where we think that work should be done in collaboration.
Okay, so the intent will be that by the time that this comes back for us to, for final approval, or when it goes out to public review or whatever, there will be some sort of a placeholder to account for facilities, security, and those types of pillars.
That's absolutely right. Because, because that, as you well know, if we go forward with just this and we don't account for that, that's going to have major impact on staff timing as well.
Okay. So the last thing I'll mention is a couple of things. I know that, there's a lot in here, so I'm not trying to pick it apart, but just noticing the things that aren't. I didn't notice anything in terms of, like, post-secondary, CTE, or career, or something like that. So I don't know if that's something that's just inherently assumed in here, but that was just one of the thoughts that I thought of when I was reading it. And I think that's all that I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Anyone else? Ms. Maxicelli?
I was hoping you'd knock a little more off my list, Mrs. Jacobson, but thank you for raising that about the facilities. I was wondering that as well. I can't do this in any particular order, so it's just in the order that I wrote it down. One thing regarding communication, I didn't say anything about the district website. And is that something that you are thinking to address, whether it's ADA compliance, whether it's a, did I miss it? Thank you. That was an easy one. I, I, I will say, yeah, the rest won't be, but I will say that I am interested to see how this is going to be organized, because this was very difficult to read. And actually, I love the word that you used, Mr. Cummings, with the two-dimensional nature of paper and how do you do that? And my first thought to answer the question you put to the board would be that, whether it's the action plan or the minor goal, is going to have to be repeated under multiple, you know, larger points, because obviously, these do, you know, feed into each. And that would just be my thought about that. But I didn't find the whole, when we look at the strategic initiatives, which have approximately eight and eight for goals one and three, and then five and five for goals two and four, that feels very lacking. The whole notion of input and output didn't translate for me. And obviously, the dates are all out of order, and again, but I appreciate this is a very raw document. So it's not that it bothers me, but it does leave me really wondering what we're going to be looking at. And if we don't see another draft until May, I guess I just, I'd be interested, maybe, Mrs. Vitale, I should be putting this to you. Even if it were devoid of content, I would want to see before May, what is the organization of this going to look like. I don't want to start going off on a whole budget thing again, but it makes a difference, you know, to understand this, to communicate this, so.
Ms. Maxicelli, I think I can at least begin to address that. You know, it's been a personal frustration of mine my entire career that the biology textbook that we all grew up with, with those translucent pages, you know, as you went through the body systems, doesn't exist in such a place such as this. I know some people have said to me that you can hyperlink through the document, but personally, I find myself just going down a hole with those hyperlinks. I did start this weekend to work on a draft of the academic achievement. I only figured it out about a year, kind of breaking out action steps by quarter, thinking about tying it, you know, rearranging some of the goals within academic achievement where they nested together better, but then also seeing opportunity, although I didn't go into it, where some of the goals in other areas could actually be then, we're thinking about a spreadsheet that, you know, is in a landscape format essentially, accounting for a budget, a year-by-year budget of what things might cost, and also below each of these areas, trying to identify administrator time when it would take place, staff time when it would take place. In its isolation, it works okay. I think as more is added to it, it's going to become more burdensome, but we'd be happy to, to bring, you know, a draft back at some point for further feedback. You know, we've had some conversations about different ways that Gantt charts and different things can be done. So we're looking at all of this, and we'd be happy to bring something back perhaps in April for the board to, maybe even, well, I'll say the first April meeting, just so that we get the board some feedback on where we are.
Okay. And again, I found previous drafts of these, I've got the 2008 one, looking back at the 2015 one. I mean, both of those had very, very different formats from each other, but very, very clear and understandable in terms of what was happening there. So I, that's what I'm looking for. It doesn't have to be a repeat, but...
Yeah. The struggle with those is they lack their action planning out, and that's what becomes too complicated. But they also treat everything, because having worked with them here, they also treat everything as a separate entity, and that's, as we know, isn't life. So one of the things we're thinking out, as we think about even bringing this to the staff level, and the worry about overwhelming them with a new five-year plan, is the better we can integrate it, the better we can communicate it, the better we can see it as attainable. And that's really, we're thinking of the end user, right, that it does that, so.
Okay. So, so in any case, I would, I would appreciate seeing what the organization is going to be, and again, with or without content, just to see how that, you know, works for us to be able to communicate and ask questions around. Goal number one, I don't see, how do you see that translating to all subjects, especially if you're trying to, you know, find outside assessments for assessing that mastery?
Well, I think in some of those subjects, we're not going to necessarily find, you know, like, for example, when the Perkins test went away, the CTE test went away, that was, that test had gotten better over the years, and it was a really good assessment of our programs against programs throughout the state and country. I think, I think to some degree, in other areas, we're going to have to use what I've been promoting for a long time, and we continue to work towards, is those levels of common performance assessments across the district, and establish within our staff expectations for what student performance really, strong student performance looks like. So there, and even in the subjects where national and state assessments might exist, national assessments exist, like ELA and math, it should be supplemented with these performance assessments as well, so that we're measuring different levels of student learning or different quantifications of student learning.
And regarding those performance-based assessments, in, again, previous drafts of the district improvement plan, it was clarified that those were always formative. Are you thinking that that would no longer be the case?
I am, because they tie now, in a sense, to our graduation requirements and the vision of the graduate. So there is a summative aspect to these.
I'm not disagreeing. I was just, that was something that was interesting to read. I guess one significant question I have about that goal number one, there are many students in many subjects who can demonstrate mastery of the content, concepts, and skills early. And where does this goal go? Because that was actually another thing that was interesting to me, is that this left off the long-term goals of the district, which is one of our policies. We've got the, you know, the mission and the vision, and we've got the educational goals, but the long-term educational goals were not included on this document. And that's where we have, as a board, the references to rigor, to excellent student achievement and performance. We actually have the line in there about performing at the best in the state and the nation. And that idea of rigor and challenge and excel, and again, please, I'm, I am not in any way denigrating the worthy goal that is that we want to achieve this for all students. I'm not denigrating that, or in any way saying that that is not incredibly ambitious, and I'm excited by that. But that other concept, I don't find in here. And I was wondering if anyone could speak to that.
Yes, and I don't know if Dr. Savicens can speak further to it, but I think one of the things that we've struggled with in the past around students, as you know, with some, with national assessments, students top out at a certain point. There's only so much growth a student can essentially achieve. So, and even, that would even be true of rubrics used on a common performance assessment. So I don't know, and I, this is a question I have, and perhaps Dr. Savicens can answer it, perhaps he'll tell me he can't, but if there's a way to quantify what I hear you asking, or is there a way, or do we have to write that goal in terms of something around instructional planning, or, you know, it's just a thought I have?
No, fair point. So let me give you something specific. I think that, I get the high school image of that, and the point is, we know our high schools have the AP courses. We know that there's going to be the rigor and challenge there. Not that we couldn't, if we wanted to, put in things regarding where students are scoring. But if the board will forgive me for bringing this up, if you've got a third grader in math who is unchallenged, if you have the seventh grader in ELA who is unchallenged, but they have developed, they have demonstrated developmentally appropriate mastery of content, concepts, and skills, then check. And I don't think that's what we want. For those students who can excel and go beyond, but they have met their grade-level standards, what are we doing for them? And how can we void, and I'm not, I should be clear, I'm not expecting necessarily, I'm not expecting an answer tonight. I will in May and June, though. What are we doing? What are we setting up as a district to do for those students who can excel and go beyond their grade-level expectations? If it's, I don't know, Dr. Savicens, if you wanted to chime in, otherwise, I can go on to my other questions.
The only thing I'll add about the national and state assessments, at least through three through eight, is the growth indicator does go up every year with them. It's on a vertical scale. So even if you exceed the expectations, the expectation of the state is to stay in that category, maintain it, and go beyond it in the next grade level. And we can quantify that measurement on language arts and math, three through eight with the growth.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that would be very cold consolation to a parent in ending third grade that, don't worry, their fourth-grade ESPEC scores are going to be off the charts. That's, it's, I don't think that's going to work, but I do appreciate that that is data that will be out there. This is more clarifying because, again, this then has to be quantified. But in goal three, when we talk about engaging in the culturally responsive curriculum instruction and assessment, how do you seek to quantify that or qualify that? I want to dispel misunderstanding more than anything else in asking that question. What does this look like? How are we working to achieve that?
Most of the goals on their goal three relate very closely to the academic goals. So with the inputs and outputs pages, there are the language arts and the math goals in terms of closing gaps and raising achievement of all learners in the school system, reducing disproportionality in terms of course-taking at high school levels, looking at suspension and discipline rates across the district, and what the disproportionality is with those. We know at this point that many of our courses in the secondary schools don't have equal measures of population versus students taking high-level courses. So reducing that as well. We also know that our achievement scores are varied by both subgroups and high need groups and, and regular student groups. So all of the goals within that relate back to the academic standards in the inputs and the outputs that are listed.
Thank you. So probably the best way, if someone asks about that goal, is to say you have to dig in, because when you see that, that obviously brings the color to that. On page three, when we talk about, or where it says, "Update the district's gifted program and policy to provide equitable access," I'm, I'm very interested in what we do to achieve that. However, I'm hoping we do more than just update. I think a really, really, with stakeholders, with staff, with families who've gone through the program, what is of value there, what is not, and how can we make it better? So maybe all of that is encapsulated in the word "update." I don't know. And if it is, fine, but I definitely am hoping that we do something robust there, and that's through eighth grade.
If you don't mind me responding, we are currently looking at, with leaders who are running gifted. So we know it's tied to policy at this point as well, and we also want to look at how students matriculate into that, beyond the test score, essentially, in terms of getting, you know, looking at a whole child who might be gifted and talented. So we are working on that process beyond the policy.
And as part of that process, are we looking at what we're going to do with the results of that arts, the gifted arts assessment?
We are looking at the talented piece as well, that we hope to bring forward when the policy comes due as well.
Okay. Thank you. On page four, discussing the Create a District Protocol for Curriculum Revision, can you provide any color to what that, what are we looking to change there? This is in, under box three, under equity and diversity?
Part of our curriculum review process that we find, found lacking when we looked at this is making sure, as we go through all of the unit designs and the articulation of standards and enduring understanding, understandings, as well as the materials and resources, is to make sure that we look, have a protocol or a lens to look through it with culturally relevant materials and practices as well. That is still in the development phase as well, but we want to make sure that before it goes out, that we are, we are making certain that all voices are represented, and that the revision practices from start to the end have that lens in it for the leaders of the department, as well as those creating the curriculum.
So are you thinking that that's going to be something like a checklist?
I think part of it could be a checklist. We don't have the final product, so I can't say, but I do think part of it is a checklist, but I think there's other areas as well to look through it with qualitative information.
I would add that there are, there are some sample districts, or some districts out there who have sampled into this work. What they've created is more than a checklist, although it can somewhat present as such, but it would require training of staff to really get into the work. I don't think you'd want to give somebody this tool and not have them understanding, you know, the definitions, a common set of understandings, the definitions and calibrate. But, but there's, there's work out there that we can model ourselves after. But it's, it's also tied to work that has to be done under goal one around aligning and strengthening our curriculum work in general. So we talked about it in a sense at the special meeting last week, just things that have to be done around a common set curriculum format that we use throughout all curricular areas. That, that's a piece that needs to happen. We also need to, because each of our curriculum have been identified and worked on separately, particularly, this problem particularly shows up at elementary, the, the accounting of the time that's required to implement each of those curriculums is done in isolation, and therefore not conscious or willingly unconscious of the other curricular areas and what time they may need. So we really have to be thinking about, are we able to do what we say we're going to do, and how does that tell us, how do we make some better strategies, some better decisions about what the priorities are? Because our teachers will tell us that they continually struggle to find time in the day to get everything that's being asked of them, and I think it's a, it's a fair enough concern. So there's, there's a lot of this work that interconnects.
And so that, exactly that, do you see that as being a discussion that, I mean, that could get started hopefully sooner rather than later, because that could definitely shape some of this work?
Absolutely. As I was saying, I was starting to work on this, the beginnings of this part of the plan over the weekend, and that is right at the beginning of the work.
Thank you. I think the rest of these questions I was pulling off of from having looked at other plans, I think I'll, I'll just send these in to you. And so, thank you. The one thing about looking back at data improvement plans is truly, you realize the degree to which that the work is never done, and yet, you're always thinking you're making progress. So, so thank you for this.
We are always making progress.
Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Grunzi?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank the committee for the opportunity to serve with them. to serve with them. And when I see this document, I sort of see it in a different way than maybe it's received by other board members, because this is really an opportunity for almost like a think tank. And, and I think it reads that way. I mean, we had, we had so much input from so many stakeholders. And I think that's something that we can really be proud of. And I think that that shows in this document. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the next phase of it.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. There's a lot in this document. And as always, invite board members to spend some time with it. Any further questions, just forward them to the superintendent, and please copy me. And, you know, moving forward, as it gets developed, if we need to add a special meeting to, you know, run by format, if it's the time to work out with our regular April meeting, just say the word, and we will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, approval of addition of bylaw, BOE bylaws, Policy Series 9000, Article II, Section Four, that the Board of Education approved the addition to Article II, Section Four. Can I have a motion? Mr. Asa, a second. Ms. Guernsey? For the public, the Board discussed these bylaws at a special meeting last week. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or Mr. Asa?
No, I just, there was some feedback last meeting that Mrs. Vitale and I discussed and made some changes and modifications here that should be reflected, the couple notes that were made.
Thank you. We added to Ms. Maxine Cannelly's point about January for the meeting schedule, just made the note for that the committee will not have the authority to expend any funds without board approval. That language is in the bylaws, understanding committees, but worth repeating here. And added language just about budget, the projects that were in the operating budget. So if, any other questions or comments? Ms. Maxine Cannelly.
I believe this is what I asked the last time. But again, I just want to reiterate that for number five, when it's review priorities and projects, that is with an eye as well towards the past approved and now rolling out projects of the current year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, thank you so much for the, the changes that you made. I know, I appreciate them.
Thank you. Ms. Asa?
I just want to say one thing. We talked about this the last meeting. But I think it's a good time just to ask board members to think about committees that they're serving on now. I know committee assignments were made at the start of the year. But if there are any members, you know, obviously, to reach out to Mrs. Vitale that have interest in, now that we have three more seats open, possibly shuffling where you sit or putting yourself on a committee. But I think this is a great opportunity, since we have these new seats here, for you really to think long and hard about where you can put your time, efforts, and passion in. And if there's a change needed, I would just recommend any board member, reach out to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. And actually, we are in a holding pattern for some of these committee assignments, knowing that we've been talking about this facilities, the creation of this committee for the last couple months. So did not move forward on assigning everybody. If this moves, if this is approved tonight, it will obviously need to be staffed, and I will be reaching out to you. But if anybody has an interest, I invite you to please reach out to me directly. Ms. Jacobson?
Just to piggyback on that idea, just, I know I've raised this concern before, but do you feel that we have the capacity to seat three committees at this time? Of people who you, you know, we, there's going to be nine seats, basically. And I assume the hope is that we wouldn't be double dipping. So, you know, that everyone will be on a committee. But I don't know what the thought, I just want to make sure that we have the capacity to actually fill these.
I am, I bring that to the board. I'm, we're nine members with three committees. And we discussed this in finance a little bit, looking at what other districts are doing. And it seems that other districts have at least as many committees and sometimes more. I'm hoping that we, well, I don't want to say don't double dip, because I appreciate that some board members may want to serve on multiple committees. And I, I don't want to preclude that from happening. But I think it is important that we, we look at the scheduling. If scheduling is in the, if the schedule of time of a certain committee meeting maybe is not working for the majority of board members, and that's precluding someone from serving on a committee, then maybe that's something that we need to look at. But, you know, I put this forward with Mr. Asa. I think this work is incredibly important for facilities. We've been talking about it. It was one of our board goals, facilities utilization. Prior to the pandemic, we never quite finished it. There's a lot of open questions with that. As we move forward the district improvement plan, as you note, Ms. Jacobson, the facilities aspect is not really included. That's been put forward from staff, and that was deliberate based on wanting the board to give direction on this. I think that we do need to own it. We've talked about it with the Capitol Waterfall, which is, has changed a lot in the last year with the board really prioritizing the HVAC needs of the district, having the consultant go out and look at our buildings. And now that we have more hard data on what the actual cost will be of air conditioning, we, we have work to do in aligning our priorities, moving them forward to the town, and having them fit in with the, the town's overall capital planning. Miss, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, Mr. Asa, Mr. Poppet George, Mr. Cummings, and Ms. Laborius met with the first selectwoman last week, just about capital planning. And she is looking to put an ad hoc committee at the town level. There are some concerns about the price tag of the HVAC now, especially fast-tracking it. We may need to look, go back and look at the waterfall. And I think that this, that type of work would be a great, you know, first, first project for the facilities committee, potentially working in conjunction with finance. We've talked about getting updated projections. The board gave its, since the body was to move forward and getting updated projections, we'll be, we'll be expecting that. I see that as work being done in the facilities committee to the point of just oversight from a budget point of view, with the maintenance projects that are included in our operating budget and approved as the, as the year progresses, things sometimes happen, new, new needs are identified, as we saw with some past projects that we approved that didn't move forward, supply chain issues, costs change. That would be something that a facilities committee could look at and update the board. So I'm excited about this moving forward. I hope that it gets the board's support. And before I take it to the vote, I will bring it to the board for any other questions, comments. Seeing none, we'll bring it to the public, if any members of the public would like to speak to this. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on, approval of addition to BOE bylaws, Policy Series 9000, Article II, Section 3A, that the Board of Education approved the addition of Article II, Section 3A. Can I have a motion? Mr. Asa, second. Ms. Jacobson? This was really just to, to add our SEPTA liaison formally to the bylaws, to add our liaison to Fairfield Cares, and to add a liaison to the District Curriculum Committee. That need was presented by Mr. Cummings. And as we heard, just that there's work to be done on curriculum and the curriculum, the district curriculum committee. And we thought it would be valuable to have board representative, board representation early on in the project, process, excuse me. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, before we vote, we'll take to the public. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, and Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Before we move on, as I said at our special meeting, we can amend our bylaws at any time. I just asked that board members forward their thoughts, so we can put it on an agenda to notice it to the public. At our last meeting, Ms. Jacobson did indicate that she was looking at changing items that are on our agenda. She forwarded that to the board for consideration over the weekend. Not putting it forward on this agenda, but this conversation has somewhat happened in terms of a budget review at the finance committee. And spoke to Ms. Jacobson today, asked if we could move it forward, just continue the conversation at the finance committee on how we might be able to approach this, get some feedback from Mr. Cummings and Ms. Laborius, and how, how best to move this forward. Because I agree that it, we do want to do our financial, our oversight, there are policies in place about this, and just want to make sure that all the pieces align. So this will be on an upcoming agenda. And I invite the board, a copy of Ms. Jacobson's bylaw amendment is at your seat. If we're going to be looking at the order of business, I would just ask that board members think about the overall, you know, if there's anything else you might want to change this, that if we're going to be changing a section of the bylaws, it might make sense just to kind of approach the whole thing and look at it holistically. And I will do that. You know, we had spoken about a consent agenda, if there's some things that we potentially might want to add there to move, to move our meetings along, you know, for the public, but in our own board evaluations, trying to be more efficient with our time. So just putting that out there for consideration, thinking, thinking it through. If anybody has any thoughts on that, happy to just email them to me, so I can just formulate it as we put this on the agenda in the future. Okay. Okay, we are moving on to new business, approval of policy C-191 and C-1985113, approval of policy 3191, temporary policies and regulations related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Recommend a motion, the Board of Education approves C-191, temporary policies and regulations related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, second by Mr. Peterson.
So as the board can see, there's the one change for 19.1, stripping out laws, rules, and guidelines, and changing that to required laws and rules, really kind of restricting that a little bit, or tightening that up. And then on the back, of course, the date change. And so this is the policy that makes COVID policies possible. So you can't, it's, we didn't feel it made sense to go forward with 19.8 and just have to pull all of this language into 19.8 in order to have a COVID policy that expires. So I didn't receive any questions, but I don't know if there are any at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Maxine Cannelly? Okay, seeing none, we will take it to the public for any public comment. Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson. All opposed? Ms. Rotelli and Ms. Kelly. Motion carries seven two. Moving on, approval of policy C-1985113, students attendance excuses dismissal, that the Board of Education approved policy C-1985113, students attendance excuses and dismissal. Can I have a motion to put it on the table? Ms. Jacob, Ms. Jacobson, second by Ms. Guernsey. Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Sure. So as the board will see that on page B, we did take out the language down there in the second half of the page, as representing a practice which really simply isn't, we confirmed with staff, it simply isn't happening anymore. So there was no need to keep that language in there. And this is, again, this was the only COVID policy that we felt, obviously, the green cleaning we did previously, but this was the only other policy that we felt merited bringing forward. And so it's before the board now.
Any questions? Mr. Asa?
So just to be clear, the one that we just approved, the 19.1, is really only covering this? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any public comment? Seeing none. I want to thank the policy committee for taking this up on your agenda. As the public may realize, and the board knows, we move these policies forward to the 15th, which is when the executive order expires. I appreciate you taking the time just to kind of clean it up and have a policy in place for the remainder of the school year. So with that, we'll take it to the board. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, and Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson. All opposed? Ms. Rotelli and Ms. Kelly. Motion carries seven two. Thank you. Okay, moving on, first reading of UConn research study, an institutional view of high school reading programs.
Hi.
We have Shannon Kelly on the line as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you want to give an intro, or?
Begin this. Good evening, James Zavajansik, Executive Director of Instruction, Curriculum, and Assessment. And this evening, I'm joined by Dr. Swangler, who will soon introduce you to a research proposal from the University of Connecticut. We are also joined this evening on the phone line by Ms. Kelly, who is the principal researcher of this study, that we hope to bring in district for your consideration regarding high school reading programs for students experiencing difficulties. We have passed this through our tech department as well for data security. And Ms. Burns has accepted it as appropriate. At this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Swangler, who will introduce you to the study and its components. And of course, we have Ms. Kelly on the line for any questions that follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zavajansik. Jen Swangler, Program Director, Secondary Schools, Literacy and Learning. It's my pleasure tonight to bring forward this proposal from doctoral candidate Shannon Kelly. Ms. Kelly is currently working with Dr. Rachel Gabriel at the University of Connecticut in the Department of Curriculum Instruction, pursuing her PhD. I'm excited for Ms. Kelly to bring her work to our reading teams here in Fairfield. As Dr. Zavajansik indicated, both high school principals and house principals, as well as the reading teams, have had an opportunity to hear a little more about what Ms. Kelly is proposing and her work that she'll be doing in district, and are excited for her to come and to engage in these conversations. Dr. Rachel Gabriel, who I've worked closely with, is her chair. She has also done work here in Fairfield, and has described Ms. Kelly as a talented and diligent scholar. When Dr. Gabriel was here in Fairfield, she thought that this would be the perfect place for Ms. Kelly to come and to participate in this work. Upon completing this study, Ms. Kelly is willing to share her research with our, with her, and her findings with us. And I am eager, after what she has proposed, to hear of her results. In this study, she will be working with high school reading educators who serve our students, our reading interventionists, perhaps our English teachers, school administrators, and myself, in small groups. She will be engaging in some observations of English classes, reading intervention, professional development, and perhaps data team meetings over the course of five days. Her work will be completed in district by the end of this school year. And she also hopes to both observe and interview students, one to two per school, about their experiences in the reading program. At this time, I would like to turn it over to you for questions, and also to Ms. Kelly. She can tell you a little more about her research and what she's excited about for her work here with Fairfield Public Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Kelly, do you want to give a brief overview of your, your study and what you're planning to do?
Sure, absolutely. Can you all hear me?
We can. You're a little garbled, but.
Okay. I apologize for not being able to make it in person. I teach in stores until 7:30. So it's a little bit hard. But I just want to go over a couple of things in terms of the purpose. So in, high school reading programs have existed for many years, but they are vastly under researched. And so Fairfield is a particularly exciting context, given the work that Dr. Swangler has put into. has put into place, and the initiatives that you all have for developing supports for students who have literacy difficulty. And this study, I think, would contribute some really important information for both Dr. Swingler and her team, and the house principals, and considering what is working really well in those programs, and how you might think about expanding those programs. So in terms of what this looks like for processes, I would recruit teachers by providing an overview of the study, explaining what all is involved. And if they are interested, and only if they are interested, then I'll get consent from them, and then from there, we'll schedule times for observations. During those observations, they're full day observations, in which I would gather field notes, particularly looking at the instructional routines that the teachers use to support students who have literacy difficulty, so both reading and writing. And then the teachers would participate, would be invited to participate in an interview or a focus group, so that I could gather more information about how they develop those routines. So that's on the teacher end of things. And then for the students, I would work with the teachers and administrators at both Fairfield Budlow and Fairfield Ward, to identify a student that would be a good candidate to shadow for a day. And then from there, I would explain the study to the students' parents at length. And if they're interested in participating, then get parental consent and also student assent, and then schedule a day to shadow that student and interview the student that day. During that day, I would be paying particular attention to the literacy supports that are provided for that student within the classroom space, and would gather field notes related to that, and then interview the student based on their reading and writing experiences. They mentioned a little bit that the data protection has been reviewed by your technology office, but I just want to talk a little bit about how I intend to protect the data. So there's sort of four key ideas here. One is that any data that is collected is immediately de-identified. So any markers of location or name are immediately removed and replaced with studentims, and that is held in a central locked file on a UConn server, that only I have access to. In addition, the, all of that data is stored on a secure university server, that's been pre-approved by the University of Connecticut's Institutional Review Board, and, yep, that. And then any copies, per the request of the district, any copies of the parent consent forms will be stored in the front offices of each school. And then last but not least, if any time somebody is participating in the study and they no longer want to participate, they can just let me or Dr. Swingler know, and the data will be immediately purged, and they'll be removed from the study. And then just finally, in terms of benefits for Fairfield, as Dr. Swingler said, at the end, I'll provide a comprehensive report that overviews the coherence of the reading and SRBI program at the high school level, which is challenging across many different contexts, and then findings about best practices in those reading classrooms, and then any identification of places to enhance that programming. And also, I offer is an opportunity to offer professional development for the teachers in terms of literacy supports that they can use within their classroom, which could be offered to English and reading teachers, but also to other content area teachers, and that's what one of my focuses and my studies at the University of Connecticut. And that is all, and I welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Maxine Canely?
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. As of the end of the first paragraph on page 1 of 1, it hadn't sounded like this was evaluative in nature, but your final comments there lead me to believe that that's part of the benefit therefore to the district, is that there is a degree of evaluative nature to this. In terms of enhancements, you would suggest PD where the transforming of macro-level goals and norms into classroom instruction, where perhaps they could be improved. So just to be clear, there is an evaluative nature to this, and that would be the benefit accrued to Fairfield, is when we get that report.
Yeah, so, right, so this is a qualitative dissertation, so all of the data collected is really seeking to explain the how and the why, but in so doing, it often, particularly given the lenses that I'm using, also will allow for understandings of cohesion among the programming. So, yeah, so that final report will share some of that information.
Thank you. And in that second paragraph, use of data, it says, you know, that the, "I will share all findings if requested." Is there something official we have to do to request that, or is that just something that staff does?
No, I think Dr. Swingler and I have talked about that, and so I think it's sort of an expectation, this, in other places, people don't necessarily want the district, but Dr. Swingler and I have talked about that, the provision of data will be, will happen for you all.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Any other questions? I have a question. Are there certain parameters in terms of identifying the students that you'll be looking for?
That's a great question. So I am most interested in identifying students who perhaps already received some type of reading services, but may not be identified with a special education label. So students who sort of fall in what we often consider in the research world as a gray area of literacy need. But I want to defer to what the teachers and the administrators know about students in order to identify that student.
Anybody else? If anybody has any questions, before we bring, put this on the next agenda, just please forward them to Mr. Cummings. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of minutes, the Board of Education approved the following minutes, January 18, 2022, special meeting minutes, January 25, 2022, special meeting minutes. Can I have a motion? Ms. Jacobson, second. Mr. Asa? Any comments or discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, take it to the board for a vote, all in favor. Motion carries 9-0. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Cummings.
And an update on the ESSER grants, that was, Ms. Laborius stated, there's a form or report at your tables, and as she stated, it's for the optically challenged, which include myself, I really appreciate the use of the big paper. But we want, we know that there was interest, particularly in light of some of the budget reductions that have happened, as well as we're at the mid-year point, to get an update on the ESSER grants and where things are, and this will have a direct, some of it will have a direct correlation on the report which follows, which is an update on the current year DIP.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Thank you, board. Courtney Laborius, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. So the two reports that you see, the first is sort of recapitulation of something you've already seen in the past, this looks like, you know, what the Munis report is. I just reformatted it a little bit so that it's organized topically, you know, before it was organized by the numbers, so I hope that's a little helpful. So the first, and then the second part of the packet is for the, those of us that are optically challenged, to have it on a larger paper so that we could, we could make sense of it. So briefly, the first summary, again, it's something you're familiar with, it's a multi-year grant, ESSER 2, I'll just remind you, runs through September 30 of 2023. And what you're seeing here is a year-to-date, the first column is the appropriation, second column, special appropriation, are the adjustments that have been made to date. Those adjustments are all the year-to-date adjustments that included revisions that were submitted in the past for the ESSER 2 grant, as well as the proposed revisions that we made as part of the budget process. Normally, we wait to do those revisions in the system until after we have the approval from the state, but in this case, because it was significant and for the purpose of the board's review, we did reflect those adjustments in the system now. Then you see the appropriation, amended appropriation, total expenditure to date, in this case, $423,000, the outstanding encumbrances, and then finally, the unencumbered balances. Below the line is the revenue total, and that, the way to read that is, that's the revenue we've drawn against the expenses. So for example, the total revenue is $1.2 million. There was an error in the original revenue appropriation, we've just corrected that, so you can see that in the amended appropriation. And you can see, for example, that our total expenditures were $423,000, of which we've drawn $422,000 to date. And then I'll go to the placemat and just highlight a few key points, and then I'll be more than happy to answer questions. And when I say the placemat, I mean the bigger document, I apologize. And so for ESSER 2, the first section is not yet described in the detailed description, but these are the three items that we had introduced to the board as part of the budget, and through the series of budget reductions that we made, that the board had requested, we're proposing to shift to the ESSER grant, which is the family and community liaison, the math textbooks for secondary, and the custodial overtime related to the extended lunch shifts. And then the second section is the boost program, and again, this is the multi-year, so you look at it as a multi-year. In future iterations, if the board would like, we can take the encumbered amount and show you the out-year plan for those funds as well. But for now, this is just year-to-date, and then unencumbered balance total for the life of the grant. You can see in the second column, again, the adjustments that were made to the boost program. And so for example, we reduced the bus transportation based on the experience of last summer, assuming that that's what we would see were we to run the same program next summer. The next section is the quarantine teacher, teachers or teachers related to the quarantine, the work development, as well as the homebound initiatives, and finally, curriculum writing, assessment, the middle school block consultant, and then various things that are considered non-instructional supplies, for example, the hand sanitizer, the HVAC control, and engineer. So on the right column, in the detailed description, where it's highlighted in red, it notes the items that we updated as part of the budget process. So, and this is in the same order as the document that you look at, that's the summary document, it's just the only addition is the column with the description on the right. And I'll pause there for questions. There's also ARP ESSER, and then the ARP IDEA is included in the packet, but I'll pause if there are questions.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
Hi, thank you very much for this, I appreciate this level of detail. I do want to call out something, both these documents are listed as fiscal year 2021-22, but presumably, there are things here that will be expended in future budget years.
Correct. I should, I should change the headers, it's a function of Munis, that it only, we have the ability to modify that header, you are correct, that for the ESSER grant, it runs through fiscal 2024, and for the ARP ESSER grant, the following year. So yes, we'll make that adjustment.
Yeah, and I might, I might add the expiration dates to the various tables, just think about this as something that might be requested by other town bodies, just to remove that possible area of confusion.
Thank you, that's good feedback, I appreciate that.
Any other questions right now? Ms. Kelly?
I too, also, I love this, the inner geek in me loves everything about this, so thank you very much for the work that went into this. I don't know if I'm just reading it wrong, and I apologize, I didn't get to read all of the explanations, and if it's in here, I apologize, but when you show about the boost classroom teachers, I'm confused about why there was never any money appropriated there in the first place. So was there like a reallocation that I just don't know, like, I just can't, it's just not jumping off of the page?
Oh, thank, thank you for that question. So it's just the way that Munis was reflecting it in the past, so I apologize that I didn't make that clear. The right-hand column with the detailed descriptions are directly taken from our state grant system. So, so in other words, we, in the state grant system, we lumped together all the summer boost staff, which included the teachers, the pairs, the social workers. When we allocated all of that money in Munis, you know, in our internal system, we didn't line it up appropriately when we, when we first did it. So Executive Director, Dr. Zakia Parish, worked through realigning it to match what we had initially submitted with the state, so that those classroom teachers were reflected in a different category. Not sure which one, when I look at this here. Yeah. No, because that was initially, you know, four, and we reduced that to three. I'll have, do you mind if I get back to you on that, Ms. Kelly? Yeah. Okay, sure.
Any other questions right now? Ms. Guernsey?
Just a quick question about the middle school block consultant. Given the sort of more recent updates we've had about that, is that accurate as of today? Or, I mean, I see the update is in red, but does it incorporate our newest information about that need?
Dr. Parish can help on this one?
Zakia Parish, Executive Director of Operations and Processes. So the, the amount that's remaining allows us some cushion if there is a need for additional consultation, but just based on the changes that we have, have recently made, there isn't going to be a great need for that. So that's why there's only 2,000 that was remaining in that account, that line item, rather, for any additional work that might have to be done.
Okay, and, and there is a second section, the ARP ESSER. So the ARP ESSER, as it being more recent, the application having been submitted and approved, is, has only expended 374K. ARP ESSER runs through September 30 of 2024. We have until July of 2024 to submit revisions, and our proposed adjustments are reflected in that special appropriation column, much like I mentioned before. Again, our total grant is 2.8 million, and we've drawn the bulk of the 374K that we've And if you look to the, the large placemat, you can see that again on the top, we're reflecting the textbooks and the chiller. The textbooks that was reflected on ARP ESSER 2 was just a portion, this is the bulk of it, as well as the chiller program at Tomlinson that we're proposing to put into the ARP ESSER grant. And then you can see, again, going down, the DEI administrator, as we had mentioned during the budget process, our hope was to put a third into the, back into the Board of Ed budget, two-thirds, and then full, fully funding the DEI administrator salary in the Board of Ed budget by fall of 2025. And that's reflected here as an adjustment to the grant. SEL, the commitment remains 155,000 in the appropriation, and so on and so forth. You can see a minor adjustment to the after-school para-professionals as a result of what we see as the experience for the para-professionals that were able to utilize this year's program. The state residency program you see is put together in one category, and as you can see, no expenditures have been made in that program yet, because that's for the next two years. Data literacy was reduced as a result of reprioritization. And the TVAL work is yet to be done, with the exception of a small amount. And then you can see the adjustments to curriculum writing, as Ms. Parish mentioned, in the middle school curriculum writing, and then assessment has happened already, and the literacy training is to come. Finally, we did reduce the capstone experiences and action research teachers as a result of reprioritization through the budget process, as well as the high school laptops, overall resulting in shifts. And again, the overall grant of 2.8 million, you can still, see that we still have 1.6 as an unencumbered balance, and this is reflective of the changes that we proposed in the, in the budget. and this is reflective of the changes that we proposed in the budget.
Ms. Kelly?
Thank you. I have a question, and this is, I just don't understand, I think, what it's been looking like, the after-school program. What's, like, what's the participation rate there? I thought that there was a conversation that we were having a hard time staffing it and having kids stay for it, yet we still have arguably a half a million dollars budgeted towards that. And I just wanted to know, is it happening? Is it working? How many people are we talking about? Like, what's the participation rate?
Yeah, so it is happening. The amount budgeted is over three years. So this is just year one of the program. The participation varies by school, and of course, by grade. There was definitely, and still continues to be, a challenge in terms of engaging students to stay after school. But a lot of, it is in conflict with other things that they have, whether it be sports or jobs, or just an unwillingness to stay beyond the school day. But our school teams are actively looking at other ways to try to engage students to be a part of the program. But again, it varies by school in terms of the participation rate. So the thought is that, based on what we saw, what we've already seen this year, particularly around the para-professionals, that's why we reduced that amount because we, I think, to date, only have three para-professionals that are working in the after-school program, where we thought that we would have a lot more. But just given the shortage in terms of pares during this regular school day, you can see that that's a trickle-down effect to the after-school program as well. So I think that as the program continues, and the teacher, and the site supervisors, and the building principals and building administrative staff look at the target students that they're targeting for the program, they've made some adjustments, really still holding firm, though, to the five sets of criteria that we initially identified as things that we would use to identify those students, those being test scores, attendance, recommendations by teachers and counselors, as well as participation in the SRBI process. So they're continuing to try to recruit and engage students, and it's a rolling recruitment process that they're engaging in.
Ms. Mascanelli?
Just one quick question. How are we doing in terms of the percentage of the budget addressing learning loss? Because with these numbers being shifted around a bit, are we still there?
Yes, so that's, we were purposely conscious about meeting that percentage. So that's also why we were careful about what we cut from the after-school program because there is a requirement of that 20%. But because we're using the funds towards textbooks, that did help offset in terms of S R two. At ARP S R, we were already at a comfortable space, so the additional textbook allocation helped. But it's, we weren't in a position where we were concerned that we would not meet that requirement that is within the grant guidelines.
Ms. Kelly?
Sorry, just to follow up on that. So if the participation stays as low as it appears to be for the lifetime of this grant, and we are scrambling at the end of, before this expires, to redistribute this money, is that how that works? Would that put us in jeopardy of not hitting our targets?
No, because the textbooks were $500,000, which is, that's, it's pretty close. That just the textbooks alone are pretty close to what was required for the 20% by the grant. So, and there'll be some adjustment. The buildings are looking already at the secondary level. They're looking at ways in which to make adjustments to the program to change maybe some of the things that they've done to identify the students that would benefit, or even change the focus for some of the programming that they have. So they are looking at ways in which the program can continue to evolve, and they'll continue to do that throughout the course of the three years of the grant.
Anybody else? Ms. Mascanelli, just none of hand up? Okay. Okay.
And there's one last section, thank you. And it's the IDEA, ARP IDEA Part B. And we're just showing this to you to highlight that it does impact the Board of Ed budget in that we're utilizing 403,000. That was eligible expenses to offset some of our tuition for this year. And so that's the bulk of that grant there, as well as a few other items. If you refer again to the large document, it describes, you know, the other items that are part of the submission for this particular grant, which was a very recent submission, including the consultative services to teams working with students with disabilities, parent training workshops, the tuition I mentioned, a small amount for travel, iPads for OTPT staff, and some technology equipment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laborious, for this information. Okay. Moving on, 2021, 2022 District Improvement Plan mid-year update. Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. And before I forget, I think at the end of this, too, I just would like to give a brief update on the COVID, the DPH call this morning, if I could. So this is an update on the current year, 2122 DIP. We are making good progress on this. As was shared with the board earlier in the fall, we were challenged initially by some of the staffing issues. It wasn't always even internal staffing issues. If you think about the equity work that we were doing with CREC, they were doing that work with Fairfield, but with a number of other districts, and they had to delay it because every district was being, having substitute issues to release staff for the training. So that was initially planned to begin in October. It actually began in January, and the plan in front of you reflects that change. Another types of things that we've had to work on, well, is some of the staffing that Ms. Laborious spoke about in terms of the ARP S R or the S R grant updates. We deliberately held back and reduced funding for some of the work that was supposed to take place this summer. We had at least intended to take place this summer. So that was, some of that was the data literacy work, the capstone work. That was essentially based on the fact that as we, and I should add, the teacher research work, that was held back because we're not seeing that staff will really be available this summer for work, given the demands on them over the past couple of years. So, and knowing what we went through last year, struggling to get staff to participate in some of the summer work, we think that we will try to embed that work in the next school year and possibly look for other funding sources for it if we do need to go into the following summer of 2023. So you'll see that that was initially going to happen. For example, with the data literacy work, we were going to start to plan for that in May, this upcoming May. Now it looks that, on the sheet, that we'll be planning for that work to begin in the fall, or at least attempting to begin that work in the fall. So those are the three types of things that we're looking at. The one last point I'd make is that this, you received this on Friday, and so when you look at the middle school block work, you'll see that it still talks about implementing the win period. But as we shared with the staff and with the board today, that work is going to be held off to the 2324 school year, or hopefully implemented in the 2324 school year. So the sheet in front of you still talks about the win period, but that would be struck in the next iteration. So I don't see if there's any other questions.
Any questions? Ms. Mascanelli?
Just one quick question. Just how much latitude do we have with the teacher evaluation plan that you're working on? I mean, that, when that whole revamp had happened, it was so strict in terms of the latitude that we were allowed. And then, I guess, we got rather ambitious with it beyond that. But to make this meaningful, to be worthy of the time that administrators put into it, that teachers put into it, to get any level of buy-in, what kind of latitude do we have with this?
Dr. Savicin, I'd like to speak to this. But I will say that a teacher evaluation plan, done well with the input of the staff, could be a transformative core document for a school system, right? And we have laid the groundwork over the past five years in terms of the learning principles that were established, the mission that the board has already established, the vision of the graduate. The core pieces are there for the potential that prepare for a strong teacher evaluation plan that will be rooted in best practices. You are absolutely right. The state, in its most recent seed incorporation, really struck out, made it a bureaucratic exercise. And I'm not speaking to the needs of, you know, tying goals to student achievement because that's a core piece of this. That's not the issue. It's the rubric and the descriptions of instruction and the unwieldiness of the current instructional document that our administrators have to use and our teachers have to respond to. It's just ungainly and not productive. So with that fabulous introduction, Dr. Savicin, could you speak to the work that's going on and what your understanding is of how the state is moving forward with this, to Ms. Mascanelli's question about freedom?
Sure. So we began the work in February. We began before, but we began in early February with all of our committees. To Mr. Cummings' point, we are working with our current mechanisms in district, the academic expectations, and the rubrics that we have to create a common understanding instructional framework for teachers across the district. That will be a Fairfield rubric, essentially. We do have latitude with that to submit to the state, and there's a second prong to this, which is the entire evaluation plan that the district will have to develop as well in terms of how many slows you have and all the mechanics of that. The consultants that we hired to help us with this work in the plan are also contracted with the state as well and have been brought in for the redesign team that they're working through currently at the State Board of Education level. So we do believe we'll be in alignment when we submit a new plan, and I think it's two years at this point.
So this will follow the same pattern of it comes before the board. We can vote it up or down, but we do not make changes to it.
Before it goes, it's finalized, absolutely, before it's submitted to the state.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question I'd had, and I should have brought it back up with the District Improvement Plan, but I found my note on it. Regarding our English language learners, because obviously, that's a group, I think, was particularly hard-hit by COVID. To what degree are they represented in that after-school tutoring program or whatever we're doing at the elementary school level? And are they just, obviously, we have the high-needs groups that were mentioned in the District Improvement Plan. But is that a group that is getting a special or extra lens or extra examination in terms of their learning loss and what we're trying to do to address them this year?
At the elementary level, the EL students, first, they qualify, some, many of them qualify for the additional EL services, but they would also be part of the school's SRBI plan and caught up in Tier Two and Tier Three instruction. At the secondary level, I'm looking at Dr. Parish. I don't think we have a specific EL after-school component, but there are certainly EL students who, in the same type of process of SRBI, have been identified for support in the after-school programs at middle and high.
Correct. So we didn't use identifications as a means of identifying which students would be part of the program if they felt that they were able to meet one of those criteria that we use for all students, which some of our students, based on the learning loss that did happen, they did result, it did result in them ending up in the SRBI process. There may have been attendance concerns. There may have been grade concerns. So any of those targets that they might have, or any of those criteria that they might have met would have qualified them to be identified for the program. But it wasn't exclusively or explicitly targeting a specific demographic.
So in general, in terms of the district, and I should have brought this up also when Ms. Laborious was here. In terms of funding, at the elementary school level, we're pretty much making do with the staff that we have, the summer boost program being, you know, a carved-out exception. But in terms of what we're doing addressing learning loss in the elementary school level, it's basically with existing staff. Is that correct?
Any other questions?
Was a, and I know some board members who are on this call are aware of it. There was a call with the Department of Public Health and C S D E this morning, the bi-weekly 8:00 AM phone call. It wasn't productive. There really was not, there really was not a lot of new information. I really felt that we were filling time on some of this, you know. I hate to be disparaging, despairing, but I will. And, you know, there was a lot of press from superintendents, Ms. Mitchell in the Fairfield Health Department, for more detail on what their plans are going forward in response to the mask option, which is going into effect on February 28th. So they did say, and I just, Ms. Mitchell shared with me an email this evening, that there will be, they've committed to further guidance prior to February 28th. I don't know the exact date of what that might mean. They have, they're working on some information around what isolation and quarantine might look like. This is what I understand from the call this morning. Some isolation and quarantine, would any of that change in response to the mask options? They're looking at, Dr. Carter, who's the state's chief epidemiologist, spoke about the idea of what do we do if we get another wave? Like, they have to, they want to prepare for that and what that might look like. It's not to say that they anticipate another wave. I want to be really careful. It's just this what-if statement, and that's how they're kind of framing their work. But again, there were really no more details than that. So as we've said, we're going forward with the mask option beginning on the morning of February 28th, Monday, May, February 28th. And when we do get this further information from DPH, we will share it out with everybody. Everybody in the state is anxious to see it. So as soon as we have it, you will get it.
Any questions for Mr. Cummings? Mr. Asa?
No, I just want to echo what Mr. Cummings said. I was on that call, and it was a little bewildering, quite honestly, to listen to them just talk and really come up with no solutions and even say that, you know, they're working on this every minute that they're awake, yet we don't have a document. So I would just, I do appreciate Mr. Cummings paying attention and Ms. Mitchell in the Health Department's voice. And she did speak up today and asked, you know, specifically about the pre-K population. So there were many people on the call during the questions section urging them to please hurry up and get something out.
Any, I know it's only been a couple of days with the scaling back of some of the mitigation strategies at the elementary schools, and actually, all of our schools. Any reports for that, or too soon to tell?
I have not heard anything.
All right, moving on, committee liaison reports. Mr. Peterson?
Thanks. We had a finance committee meeting back on the second. We did a little budget post-mortem. We kind of came to the conclusion that we felt that the season worked reasonably well, that the, you know, earlier presentation of some of the enhancements worked out well, gave us more time to digest that information. We also had a lengthy discussion about the spreadsheet issue that's been brought up with great justification about whether that's the most, whether we can make it more efficient and easier to use, both for staff and for board members. So hopefully, that will engrave that in our minds for the next budget season, and we'll be able to deal with that again. We also spent some time talking about how best to position the, to market the district's, the board's preference for accelerated air conditioning improvements. I was actually interested to see storytelling mentioned in the, as one of, in the communication goals on District Improvement Plan, because that's one of the things that we talked about, how to craft a story to push this forward with other town bodies. We also had a discussion about, another discussion about defining strategic change. We kind of came back, looped back around to the idea that we, at some point, will need to have a full board meeting and kind of hash this out there. But... to have a full board meeting and kind of hash this out there, but have more discussions about that going forward. In terms of Board of Finance, the Board of Finance meeting tomorrow night, two of our projects, our non-recurring capital projects, the Burr Boilers and the Ludlow Elevator will be on there. I'll also point out, though, it's interesting, they're going to be, they're getting a presentation tomorrow night of a Silver Petroseli report about other capital needs over the next 10 years, and those amount to 22.6 million, things like the senior center and the pavilion and all that sort of thing. So, the other priorities that the town is going to have in terms of funding in the years ahead, it's probably good for us to look at that as we try to prioritize our own funding in the queue.
Ms. Jacobson.
Obviously, everyone knows the legislative session has opened. Beyond the activity that I'm sure everyone is well aware of for the last few days, the state education budget will be up for presentation on Thursday morning, and we'll have a public hearing Thursday afternoon. So, if anyone has any questions on what is or isn't in the state budget, I'm happy to answer that, and I plan to submit some testimony on my own, on a certain area of that, but just as my own self. So, if anyone has that. But as things come up, I'll make sure everyone is aware and bring them to your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Kripper.
Yeah, before I came here tonight, I called into the Mill Hill Building Committee meeting. Wasn't much going on, just approving some invoices, and things continued to be on track, finishing off punch list. With the weather being what it is, all of the outdoor, you know, site work that is part of the plan is not going to be taking place, which is nothing new or different, until the weather improves. And then, like, around, like, with the playground and the hill going down and everything like that, just, you know, when it's been a construction site for a couple of years, it needs a little sprucing up in addition to just some other stuff going on. So, but again, everything continues to be moving along nicely, and they're not meeting again until March 15th is the next scheduled meeting, so they're spreading out their meetings now.
Thank you. Any other reports? Do you have anything, Ms. Teresa? Just to reiterate, there is a Board of Finance meeting tomorrow, and the capital, our non-recurring projects will be on that agenda. The capital project, bond council wasn't ready to put the Fitz House HVAC on their last agenda, but it will hopefully be on an upcoming agenda soon. The HVAC, that right now is being held. We were given some guidance by the First Select Woman's Office that in terms of bonding per year, the combined total for town and Board of Ed is 25 million, split between the two. So, you could see how our HVAC proposal might put a challenge to that. So, that worked, those conversations are ongoing, but wanted the board to be aware of where we are with that. And with that, we'll take it to open board comment. Ms. Teresa.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank Mr. Cummings, the administrators, and the staff that took the time in the previous two weeks collecting all of the mitigation strategies and trying to figure out what was going on at each building, to try and ward off what we had seen over the last couple of years with discrepancies and different things happening at different buildings to try and make sure that things are being treated equally. And wanted to thank the very thorough FAQ document that came out, which really addressed a lot. That was welcome news. I know for me as a parent, and we've heard from a lot of parents, that appreciated that very thorough document accompanying the letter describing the mask optional on the 28th and the rolling back of some of the mitigation strategies that were used prior. So, thank you for that, and looking forward to continuing our quest for normalcy. We're getting there.
Anyone else? I'm just wishing everybody a happy and healthy, long holiday weekend, especially our staff who have been working so hard, and appreciate all that you do. I hope that people are going someplace, well, warm, and if you're going someplace cold, someplace fun. And those who that are staying home, as I probably am, I'm looking forward to just some relaxation with the family. So, thank you, and with that, a motion to adjourn. Ms. Jacobson, second by Ms. Guernsey. All in favor, we are adjourned. Whoop. Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Any public comment, seeing none? Nine zero.